I mean, I'm actually gonna.
It's time to each of our.
We're doing five hundred.
Is that a second?
But are we expecting Molly to come?
I haven't had any communication with her today.
Well, let's just go ahead and get started. She doesn't visit anything too big. So um it's seven oh two. Following the meetings of order.
He wasn't doing well.
Attention. How are you feeling, Valerie? Are you telling her?
Just hiring all of you guys.
That round now.
Oh, okay.
Who is on the A G L A P? Yeah. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Molly. Lisa, here. Will be Dan.
Your something first name, that's this.
There she is.
Here.
Okay, we have an agenda. Uh, report on relevant actions by town council. Did I say we have no agenda? If we have a farm, well, then.
Vacation ring. I would, yes.
We talked about some of the things that we're gonna talk about tonight. Let me start with those. Out the title. It's a couple of things that we're talking about. Committee assignments, new committees, the town council, I think it's probably gonna show the money that we need and the time that we need. There were a couple of other counselors that were. Interested in that, and it sounds like that. So we'll, we'll be talking about that next week.
The one thing that I have to say about that is you have to coordinate with SCAN downstairs, because SCAN has. Activities that we plan around. Town council, for example, we have to be mindful of drum, drumming sessions now interfering with A R B. So if we're going to move drumming, we wanna make sure it's not gonna interfere with the town council.
Liz and I were just talking about making meetings more interesting, perhaps that those would be good for the town.
Yeah, emphasis.
Well, what we were talking about.
Yeah, that's.
See.
You might help. It's.
Low absentee.
Just say, I'm not one of the drivers of it, but it, but it is, it does sound like there's momentum. One of the points they were making was a fair amount of holidays on Mondays.
Right.
And the other point was. Maybe the time should change. That being said. It could be if we did something different, too. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but just letting you know that is what the council is talking about it and.
Oh, so would this be work and regular session?
Yes.
Change? Okay.
Yeah, it sounded.
Oh, no, no, I'll reach out to SCAN. And share SCAN with you guys, so you guys can coordinate next week.
But it, it does sound, and that's a good, so those points are good, so we should bring that back to the council, just to make sure that we. Either choose to have or not have the drums, and we are having our meetings. Sometimes we have the drums. Um, the other thing I would say, the. Uh, the process of the council getting updates from. The planning commission have been good, we've been like, and then keeping them informed, and we will be getting to the timeframe where we'll, we'll be having. Budget conversations also as we. Looking to the year. That would be main points.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. You know, the thought hurts me. Why don't we just have all of the meetings on the same night of the week? And just have, you know, the first and the. However, it works out, the first being planning commission, the second and the third being town council, and the fourth being A R B. And just make it the same night of the week, whatever night that is, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whenever. Just. That would be less of a conflict with SCAN, for example.
I, I will pass that on.
This is my idea. Um.
As long as we do that except for A R B.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you. Matters from the public. And I just wanna. Point out that we do have a public hearing scheduled, but that's not until. Uh, number four, can we agree to the agenda?
I know. Make a motion to. Agree to the agenda as written.
So. Excellent. All the favor.
I.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, matters from the public.
Um, so only person on the line right now is James Stange.
Okay. You know, number four, new business, public hearing for zoning text amendment to section eleven, commercial district. Um, I do. Do we have a sign up list?
You know, smelling house.
Okay, is there any names on the sign up list? Okay, does Nancy come? Does Nancy? No. So, um, would three minutes be sufficient for her? I mean, there's plenty of time for us to come in here. What, what do you think you need?
No, that's perfect. I, I don't think that we are, uh. Saying anything new, but this is a public meeting. Um, we are here, uh, and I represent the, um. Riviera Soccer Club member event. Um, we are seeking to, um. We're supporting the amendment of the, uh, ordinance, which I understand has been worked on, and we are supporting the. Uh, concept of many gets such that the soccer club will no longer be under both sections. It would only fall into the section that we, uh. That does not require a special use permit. Um, I think that there's been, um, a lot of discussion about what that, um. Uh, provision should say, but I think that where, uh, everything is, um, falling down at this point is that they, uh, and I think that sort of your town council. Has expressed to me that the support has been to eliminate the, um. The reference to, uh, the clubs and some of the other items from the section, I believe it was. Just a lot of. Related from the section requiring the, um, special use permit. And I, other than that, I don't really have any other comments, or, uh, just if anybody has any questions. Do I need to go over what the. What assumption statement is or anything like that? Again, I think we've done it a couple of times, but I'm happy to if you'd like.
Yeah, so this is more just a general, whether it's not pertaining specifically to the Riviera Club.
Right.
More about whether. The conflict should be resolved in the commercial districts in favor of making the by right or special use permit. So it's not whether we. You know, support or don't support the Riviera Club specifically, but whether we think that commercial district should support this by right or by special use. That's exactly right. I mean, we're, we're just in, in support of, of the, uh. The concept of just eliminating it from the, um. I'm just wrong, but. Um, uh, uh, striking through eleven, uh, the code one out of one to subsection five. So. That's pretty much it. Unless anybody has any question or. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the, um, and specifically, we have. More than just that one question that needs to be looked at is. Also the commercial district. Fire departments and rescue stations and.
Laundry and.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the question is generally that those should be by right in the commercial district, or should they be. Oh, is there anyone else something public to speak? Are we voting on these separately or together?
I would say separate.
Yeah, I think you stick with the first one. Both, and then go on.
Yeah.
Well, do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Uh, no one else on line, unless the James exchange is looking to speak. Take that as a no.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and discuss. So we could discuss how to tackle them, whether individually or. And everyone. They're, they're certainly distinct, so. I think it's best to vote separately on each of them.
Yeah.
Anyone wanna? Give else motion?
Um. So, yeah, I, I think. For the, the clubs and lodges and the civic. And that, that piece of ordinance. I think I'm leaning at this point towards special use permit, because we are. Taking away potential commercial space in the commercial district for businesses, so. I think. I think if we're going to do that, it would be nice to consider the clubs on a case by case basis, or the fraternal orders, or whoever might be. Coming forward and wanting to run a club in the commercial district. Irrespective of the Riviera Club.
Yeah, let me ask a, ask a technical question, be. Hey. There's. In, in a sense, there's two. There's two yes options, so to speak. I mean, we could say no, right? You could say, no, we don't want the club. But that, but that's not the debate. The debate is which yes.
Yeah, just because, and, and I did want to make that clear. I'm not voting yes or no for this specific use case. I just think. In our commercial district. If we are giving up commercial space that could be filled by a business. That I think we should consider those cases on a case by case basis.
Yeah, which is a good point. The reason I was trying to ask that technical question is. Usually we say. Yes or no to something, you know, these like, we're gonna vote yes, we're gonna have the houses, not have the room. And this, this is two yes and two. So it's. Can, do we have to have a recommendation? I mean, in other words.
Well, we're cleaning up the zoning language.
Right.
And then they can, if, if, depending on which way town council decides to go. Then they operate by use or by right, or they come for with a special use permit, and then at that point, we would make a recommendation for a specific. Use case.
And, and because the zoning is in conflict with each other.
Right.
Future applicants wouldn't know how to proceed, so you're losing that to. Tie it up.
Or we don't do anything, and as Javier has pointed out, we go with the strictest interpretation of the zoning, which would require a special use permit. That doesn't seem like the best way to go, though. I think we should clean the language up.
And, um, before I get to play devil's advocate, because we know I like to play devil's advocate. Um, when you're bringing groups of people downtown. To congregate, you might expect them to spend money in the community. You might expect them to go to Heem Line and buy party supplies and. Go to Lucky's and buy, you know, food and cigarettes and gas. Um, maybe go to the tavern, so there could be a. Positive commercial use to it, even if, if there's no tax base to the business, because. There may not be a tax base to a social.
Right, but we, I mean, even. Even requiring a special use permit, that doesn't mean, no, they can't be, you know. It just requires anybody who would want to run. An organization like this in the commercial district, bring a special use permit to us, and then we could have those, yeah, I mean, that's a great argument. For letting them operate. It's, it's not saying no to. The clubs or lodges. It's just consideration on a case by case basis.
Mm-hmm.
What would you say? So if, as the club is interested in the by right, what would you say is the negative of their perspective, so to speak, or that view, just the. One of the, one of the, what would your thought be that by right wouldn't be in?
Um. Because we're giving up the commercial space in the commercial district for a business who could generate more. Taxes and tax revenue for the town. That's where we get the, the bulk of our operating money is from our businesses.
The one thing I would say maybe. I mean, that's true. The other thing I. The biggest thing if Mayor Grove were still here, he could. Work desperately to have. Anything happening in buildings, I mean, that. In a sense, it's a little bit of a. Subjective debate to say we want a business there versus social clubs, so to speak. I, I would argue that it's good to have a life source, and, you know, it's good that we're using the building, and your point is a good one. I mean, their taxes are helpful to have. I, I think. Just added a light on, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I think too, you know. If you open it up to by right, it. It could be a club or an organization that you might not want in town. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not talking about the Riviera Club. I'm not talking specifically. I'm talking in broad generalization. What do we want this zoning to do for our town?
I have a question. Since I wasn't part of all this discussion historically, is the Riviera Club gonna have any employees?
I don't know. I haven't asked.
I guess she's not allowed to speak anymore.
I, I would invite her to answer the question. Nancy, would you like to answer that question? Um, I believe that there will potentially be maybe. Single employee or someone there. Um, there will certainly be activity there from, um, people who will be assisting. So I would anticipate that they would. Thank you. I, if, if given the opportunity, I just have a couple, I have a, a comment, but I understand that the public portion is closed, so if you all. I mean, your ideas and your own comments is in the discussion, if that's appropriate later.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Javier, let me ask you to go back to you. The staff recommendation by right for.
Previously, I kind of stepped back, because I also want, I was concerned I was overstepping some bounds and letting you guys. Have a recommendation without my influence, but, uh. If, if you're asking right now, my, my view is your commercial district is your most. Use heavy, and you're most flexible. When we think about our most limiting zoning is our rural, and it goes village residential bumps up. Then increases, you know, from light to heavy industrial. So, um, I would weigh that. I think you're all bringing up points that have been brought up in two different ways, and they're all valid points. And this is why it's Paul's cigarette. Um, so that's my inclination too. Um, but you're having the same, similar conversations you've had with other uses in town.
Sorry, what, sorry, what was your inclination?
Um, so we've used, we've had the same. Oh, my inclination is by right.
Okay.
Because it's commercial use, so you, you're always. You're always having more possibilities of use in your commercial district compared to. What I see is, for like a better term stricter, being rural or village residential, for example, which we talked about today.
Okay.
And the original club that was upstairs was by right?
I think it was before our zoning, so got grandfathered in.
Okay.
No, I, I'm actually, yes, it was. Uh, because our zoning came in in ninety six, and that was before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then. We should remember that we've had new use downtown also, um, a history of that, so. You're, you're kind of delving into those questions about what, what do you want incentivized, what do you want to disincentivize? And then what do you want to encourage or disencourage? In different areas of stocks, so. Uh. Maybe we're getting ahead to accomplish.
And the, and the only other club in town is the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
Which is to recreate. And drink juice boxes. This is to drink adult juice boxes and recreate. And that's by right?
Um, our bars are also by rights, our thrones that also have instant licenses.
Yeah.
So I think it's, like I said, it's, it's also what. What intentions and what incentives, or what do you want to encourage or disencourage?
Uh, I think, were you asking, was the Boys and Girls Club, or they might write a chapter asking to have?
Yeah, so they're public. There's no public, and then they're right for that certain reason.
Mm-hmm. But they're requiring membership, then they can say they don't want people if they don't want. People. Kids.
Not sure.
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things I'm gonna have to say this way is. I have personal opinions on. Various issues. We all have the personal opinions, but. I think my opinion. In terms of like a club, I think they're irrelevant, so to speak. In other words, I would defend the club to be here that I don't. With the law that, or that maybe we might have issues with, but I'm not saying it's that's this club. Meaning and at, being an advocate for free speech, so to speak, so I. Am not concerned about, uh. I mean, I would rather not do some of the things, and others, I may disagree with some of their points, not this club, but other clubs. At the same time, I guess what I'm saying is I, I, I think the by right is simpler. In terms of. The overall issue that accomplishes what we want. I very much understand your point. There's some good ones, but. I, I also, to me, one way or the other, we're gonna allow them to be here, so it's not, this is not a hill to, for me, like, I don't think it's a. Hill to die on, so to speak. It's one way or the other, we're gonna have this club, we want the club to be here.
Well, so I was, I was approaching this by taking the Riviera Club out of the equation, so. Without thinking about them specifically and whether we want them here or not. What do we want this zoning ordinance to say? And I was trying to consider it from that perspective, instead of thinking specific, about a specific use case. So.
Which is, which is a good one.
Because I am in favor of the club. I will say that. I, you know, if, if, you know, no matter which way we go, I would be in favor of. The club being here and operating in town.
I'm, I'm using the very sophisticated process of the donut shop principle. They, they came to buy the donuts, so to speak, and. What's the issue for their donut? The other donuts, I don't know at the moment. Their donut, I want to answer, so to speak, so.
Yeah.
I, so, so I guess I would just say. Probably I can buy rights to help their donut shops, obviously, because that's the issue that's in front of us. It's not to say that it doesn't have ramifications, but maybe. More comprehensive, and like I said, one way or the other. We're welcoming, we're the club, we're the. And we're making a recommendation to the town council who may see it the opposite that we do too, which I don't know. There, there has been split, there have been opinions both ways on council. I, I honestly would not like to predict it. Because I also think it's relevant, even if, like, if we vote, I think it's. If, if we, if we make our recommendation, I think it's relevant. One way or the other, but. There's, it's like a dissenting opinion, so to speak, in a court case, it's, it's relevant.
What was the last special use permit that we issued?
Last special use was Hallow Quicks property. That far back, so that was.
Up, up on the hill.
Yeah, so tourist lodging on Village Residential. And, uh. You guys recommended it with, off the top of my head, with a few conditions, and then it got approved through town council. But it was an S U B, yeah. Last fall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, it took a really long time, and that's always my hesitation with special use permits, to me, and it. It's gotta be really frustrating to be on that side of it and have to sit through months of things. But, you know, I think we're giving it the weight that it deserves, because this. Is the sort of thing that could have an impact on the community, and that's the purpose of us sitting here. Having zoning conversations. We have responsibility to the community to make sure that we're permitting, you know, uses in appropriate areas. So we don't wanna have a factory next to someone's house, and we don't wanna have, um. Um. A cool hall social club next to someone's house, perhaps. So, you know, that's why we're having this conversation.
Can I just, I, I, I just like to, um. Kind of something, and this is not on the habit, but. I've recently become involved in this process, and I'm, I'm learning a lot, but I have always known that Scottsville is driven to try to attract business. And try to attract activity, and I, I help run a soccer lady, and I'm a teenager in the fall. It just creates so much activity. We don't pay any taxes to people. We're not profiteering, but at the same time, I feel like we bring people to the community. And I think that if you require a special use permit by clubs that are, regardless of your personal opinion about what they're doing, if they're doing it lawfully, if they're doing it. Safely, if they're doing, they're following the rules. I don't know that you can make individual decisions based on what they're doing. If you want to attract businesses, if you put a special use permit hurdle in front of them, a lot of them aren't gonna try to do it. And I think it just has a chilling effect on what you're trying to accomplish, which is bring business, bring people to Scottsville. And yeah, okay, we're gonna probably bring some people to Scottsville with all of the businesses that maybe we don't all like or agree to, but we do need to grow up. I mean, Scottsville needs business, and if you put a special use permit in front of some of these people. Will, will the Riviera Club still go for it? Probably, but at the same time, you need to work beyond the Riviera Club. We need to look together, don't that shop that's gonna say the heck with it. I'm gonna go somewhere else. I think we need to make focus on the fact that you're trying not to chill the, the, the attraction of people and businesses, especially the commercial district. That has, you know, more latitude to do all of the things, and also where they're going to be opening strangely enough. It, it's what it was used for before. It's not right next to a house. It's, it's in a space that was utilized for a very similar purpose. So I think if they're gonna operate lawfully, we, we've already said that we are, you know, philanthropic, they support the community, but then you need to support businesses. To come here, and if they don't do the right thing, or they don't follow the law. We will certainly have that taken care of, and I think that it, it's just important for you to keep in mind all the donut shops, not just the Riviera Club. Thank you.
I think, um. You know, one consultation that I share, I think, with Commissioner Strazner is that this is a storefront that in the past was used for commerce. Whereas now it's not, to me, now it's gonna be sort of private. You know, if, if it was the upstairs, it might be a different conversation. But, you know, again, we're still in the commercial district, so. It's not, it's not about this, this, um, particular selection and their particular locations, more about the big picture.
I came in with the plan to motion for a by right at F Y A. So that was my original plan after doing all my homework and reading on this. But since I knew I want to hesitate on. Jump into that, but to me, I, I mean, I think that's the right thing to do based on the historical factors we have in front of us. For Scottsville, um. And it's no offense to Shannon.
I'm not offended.
Um, that was my intention, um. And, you know, Molly always livens up in conversation, so wish she was here, but, uh, unless there's more discussion, I was gonna motion for a by right. But all right, with everyone.
So do it.
Okay, I motion the planning commission recommend to the town council section eleven point two. Ten to I be struck through via zoning text amendment, thus making clubs, lodges, civic, fraternal, patriotic, patriotic use be by right in the commercial district.
Good sir.
Discussion, any further discussion?
Question, question again to you, I mean, if, if we, again, I would like to do, instead of, if we had a two, three votes. That's what we say to the town council, we say we have a two, two vote.
Well, somebody's coming on the elevator. There's only three voting members, so it wouldn't be.
Oh, you're not, you're not.
On the inside right there.
Okay. Sorry.
Little two of them.
Which I've not yet.
We'll take the vote. You haven't, we haven't taken the vote yet.
That's true.
Is, is she here for us to ask questions of him?
Yes. Yes. For Commissioner asked.
Uh, I was just wondering if you had any concerns about, uh, the time and the ABC laws with this facility.
Or with the larger picture of lodges, clubs, civic organizations. In the commercial district, not necessarily this club, but any club, not, not. Yeah, and it's not pool halls, not like nightclubs, that's a separate zoning ordinance, that's already special use permit. But we're talking about civic organizations and fraternities, lodges.
I was a member of our, uh, Masonic Lodge down here before moving to Buckland. I don't have any issues with the clubs, so almost they stay within the law, do what they're supposed to do. Which all of them, to my knowledge, since I've been here the past two years, have had problems. And I don't have any objection to this room.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, do we need, um, roll boots?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chrisville?
Yes.
Not her loss?
Yes.
Commissioner Strassner?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you, thank you.
We still have two more to vote on.
So, um, how about we look at fire and rescue?
I make a motion on the fire and rescue to make it a special use permit, I do not want to be living next to. The fire squad. Also, I think it's highly unlikely that they would ever request to move back to town.
Back to the specific public?
Yes, correct.
Uh, second.
Discussion?
So the, to go to follow up on your point, that. Let me ask you, so do you, you're going to be, after the staff out here again, does it, do you comment on this, if I don't recall?
No, so it, it actually hasn't really come up during all these discussions. I think in the same way, well, I'll, I'll give you my staff opinion. I see some merit in requiring an SUV, just because it's such a unique use. I think our commercial zoning is disincentive, well, downtown, there would be a disincentive or a store. Uh, overlay in the district, uh, just because you just really couldn't run a piece of rescue squad and rose this lead. Um, we zoned our current fire department's zone public. So it seems that previous intentions either by a council or planning commissioner's staff was to use public for those kind of spaces. Um, and that was back when we, an extra portion of, um, Irish Road, am I right? Uh, back through the history, so.
So a portion of Irish Road is zoned public?
Public, it is just that, uh, Station seventeen, so the fire department volunteer fire.
Or but it's more site specific.
Yeah, maybe a spot, uh, but surrounding it, it's, it's, yeah, commercial up there. Uh, because one was right across from the food line. I would, as staff, I would kind of incline towards special use, just because. But to be honest with you, I think nobody, I think you wouldn't, I think your rescue squad would be the first ones to tell you if it's a good spot or not. Uh, in general. So, yeah.
Well, and it's worth thinking about. Years down the road, I mean, thirty years down the road, our town boundaries may look very differently, and our commercial district may. In all likelihood, expand up in that direction where it would be a more logical place to put it, no one. I, I mean, I agree, there probably would never be a rescue squad down, downtown here.
It's a little bit more complex than zoning text, but you can make distinctions between it being in or outside of the historical, historic overlay. Essentially, our next topic does that distinction, that Strasser and us talked about. Where, uh, we're more limiting with laundromats, uh, requiring an SUV when it's within the historic overlay. But if you're in a commercial district outside, it, it ends up being a by right, either as a primary use or principal use, or as a accessory use.
Thank you, that's, so your recommendation is special use.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have a vote, please? Commissioner Chrisville?
And the motion again is to do special. Yes.
Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
Commissioner Strassner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion passes unanimously. Laundries and dry cleaners, this is the third, um, conflict that we noticed in the commercial district. Current zoning text language for commercial district has laundries, laundromats. That are by right in commercial, and then those that require, and then, in the next paragraph. Require a special use permit in the commercial district, this is within the historic overlay district. Um, and then are by right as an accessory use within the commercial district, except for the historic overlay. And then dry cleaner is not, I'm not really sure that I understand that, can you explain this again? Because laundromat is okay, but is dry cleaner, that's not?
Yeah, so I, I took a while, so I'm trying to figure out how to write it up in an easy way in an email. Uh, so I kind of expected we would, it'd be easier to talk there with it, so first, so I kind of alluded to it before, but. Um, if you look at our zoning texts, uh, which I included in the packet. Um, under by right, just section eleven, ten, and one, you have, uh, please let me know. Uh, Shannon, if I'm. You have.
It's section B twelve.
Yeah, so page eighty-two, you're looking at the bottom. And as Shannon said, twelve, and you have laundries and dry cleaners.
As by right.
And by.
Yes.
Um, and then if you keep following it through our zoning text, it's easier, I think, to think of first laundromats and then dry cleaners. I could be wrong, but that's how I figured it out, uh, yesterday. You hop over to section.
It's page eighty-five, number, letter E, yep.
There it states that laundromats, within the historic district, should require an SUV. Ascension, other than other details.
Why does it, why does it have an attendant that shall be on duty all hours?
It's because they don't want to sell serve down there too, so you would have to have somebody in there.
Is the current laundromat in the historic district?
It is.
Does it fall right outside of it?
It is.
Because they don't have it in attendance.
No.
How long is that? Okay, so is that, whoa, that's so close.
Yeah.
There was, my, I blew last week, and I was in there on Friday, I think I blew this week.
Doing laundry, with all the comfort, there was an attendant in there.
So it might be.
Several times, and that, there's.
There could be one or two things, just knowing our zoning text, it could have come in and essentially just get, been a brand while they're there. Or after seventeen years, we, uh, have figured out a zoning violation. Uh, but my best guess with almost everything in Scottsville is that we have some. Uh, incongruencies from before, so for example, uh, Monmouth went through an SUV with you guys for the same reason, when it changed ownership. Uh, because it used to be formally zoned that way, and then, um. Can't think of a good example now, but, uh, our sign permits sometimes have examples like that, you have old signs. It can be recent.
What's your recommendation?
For this, I would add, well, I couldn't think of a decent option that you'd. Um, so what you would do is you would include dry cleaners in two different sections, so they would be in line with the intentions of laundromats. So essentially, what Shannon found was that, uh, we had laundromats stated clearly through our section eleven. But at some point, we just dropped, talked about dry cleaners, so, so for example, a dry cleaner has a primary use. Is by right separate in the historic overlay district, so they would need a SUV. And then if a buyer, if a dry cleaner is an accessory use to a building, you would also need an SUV. Which is the same as laundromats, laundries.
But only if there's an attendant in there, correct?
We could include that, I didn't include, that, that would.
Who's going to enforce the attendant?
Zoning administrator?
The watch of the watchman, um, you could include that as an amendment to the motion I have here. You want some clarity, that would actually be probably the most consistent with our previous zoning.
Yeah.
Didn't there used to be a dry cleaner in the little mini place next to Bane's?
So, I didn't know that that would actually classify, because that was just, um. A pickup and drop off location, they didn't actually do the dry cleaning, they shipped that out to wherever they sent it to.
Interesting, I was wondering how that worked in there.
Uh, because I think the concern here is about chemical use.
Right.
Yeah, it's the first thing our planning fellow brought up.
Yep.
And what chemicals are they using in modern washers and dryers, besides laundry detergent?
You probably just see how so laundry detergent we all use.
Bleach.
Bleach, I'm more worried about drug deals going on.
Think that's by right, and you can, any of it, and that's why I want an attendant, that's why I want the attendant there.
That's a special use.
Sure, I've been there, like, I go down to wash the dog.
She was on the phone the whole time, and her kid was with her, but she was by them.
Okay.
I don't know how you make it consistent with that stipulation in there, either take it out.
You could also do that, since we're there, if you're, if you don't really think there's any merit having a attendant there.
I don't think there is in modern society, but, and there's no implementing. Unless Javier's hanging out there on Friday.
Yes.
We'll, we'll take shifts.
We have to specify hours.
There, it's open twenty-four hours.
That laundry cleaner is open twenty-four hours?
I'm pretty sure, I mean, I've never been there after eight o'clock.
Alright, so what do we want to do? We want to make it consistent, the language consistent?
I want to strike out the attendant, because that's just not reasonable.
Always, let's make it all by right. I mean, yeah, so then, yeah, so I would make a motion that we update the zoning on page, what was that? To include. Launder mats and dry cleaners located in the historic overlay district as special use, requiring a special, or. Yeah, that's a special use section, requiring the special use section or permit, yes. Let me start over. I make a motion to require that laundromats and dry cleaners located in the historic overlay district. Are, operate as, um, by special use permit only. And I, I recommend to strike the provided that an attendant shall be on duty during the hours of operation.
Second. Discussion? I guess I'm not concerned about having the attendant, that doesn't, um, feel like a sticking point for me. Um, I feel like they want an attendant anyway. And then, just another point to, if we do proceed with this motion, that we have to look at, um. Section twenty-two, was it? Eleven dot.
What page?
And on page eighty-three, eleven dot ten dot twenty-two A.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
That's the one that addresses the laundromat and the historic overlay.
Yeah, that's what would get struck through. And then you would have, uh, dry cleaners to both. Same page eighty-three, and then, I believe, eighty-five, one five.
Wait, so on page eighty-three, you would strike through the, the attendant, okay.
And eighty-five.
And eighty-five, yes.
And then you would add to both those pages again, dry cleaners.
So they're by right, if they're not in the historic overlay, and they're special use permit if they are in the historic.
And in both instances, as a primary use or an accessory.
Right. Yes.
That's, that's, the motion adheres to that.
Yeah, right.
Okay, vote. Commissioner Chrisville? Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
Commissioner Strasser?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Right, seeing enough of that zoning text. Good work, good work.
You're really pushing the grant writing.
Just need some brains on there.
Okay, open this, comprehensive plan, Lincoln.
I've never tried.
We, and we are fifteen minutes ahead of schedule, everyone give yourself a, that, go.
Let's keep it that way.
I'm going to come back here tomorrow morning, saying that Alamo County.
Oh, man.
Yeah, and me, eleven AM.
Okay, so we've got seven proposed agenda items, uh, we'll just keep rolling, keep reading. Okay, so, look forwardly, uh, the conclusion of the community engagement happening on January twenty-third, so. The thirty-two students from Scottville and Mitchell came here, they're all the third grade class. Really like to thank Mr. Briscoe, Ms. Strassner, and Ms. Morse, uh, who were also here along the way. I know, uh, to, you know, uh, talk to them here in town hall, but also take them on a little tour, okay? So you can see Mayor, uh, was in attendance also, you can see the photo in the right hand corner. Uh, then the other photograph on the right hand side, Bonn is for third and fifth students for sitting in gallery, on the teachers. So, just a quick overview, uh, of those thirty-two students, well, who from Scottsville, fourteen were from Alamo County. Like, you are, weren't quite sure where they're from. But, um, they did put their stickers on, uh, the wider regional map or the town map, and a lot, uh, came from the. Es, Esmont area. Um, they were really excited to talk about walkability, uh, the green dots are positive areas, or where they want to walk, or the red dots where they have trouble, anything that's dangerous. So, um, that was, I think, a good exercise, and at the same time, the other half of the class was really giving a, giving a tour of the office. And maybe how I said that part.
Um, it was kind of interesting explaining your job, the third grader, like, kind of connecting it together, uh. But what I found really interesting was, um. I think I was underselling how aware they were of exactly what we work, and the work we do, so I was appreciative of. Planning commissioners and town council members and Lincoln, of course, staff coming in with, uh, the class, um, and I saw that. They were happy with it, and also effectively saw it as a good. Of course, staff coming in with the class, um, and I saw that they were happy with it and also effectively saw it as a good connection with their curriculum. Uh, and I think almost three different ways that I connected, not just civic, uh, you know, water shit.
Yeah, they learn about water sheds in third grade. They learn about direct indirect representation. So this was really a spa for their visit. Uh, so, uh, we've had the votes that they made, and, and, um, if either of you that were there would like to jump into, just jump in.
I did like how you, you illustrated the direct and indirect. Um. With, when, you know, the broader community voted for who they wanted on the town council, and then the town counselors voted for who they wanted to be. The mayor, so I thought that was a good illustrative point.
And then the mayor, uh, didn't vote, just like traditionally, cuz there wasn't a tiebreaker. Um, first, they talked about what they liked about town, so a lot of hands being raised, I, I didn't really know their names, but we got through that. Uh, top three things that they really liked, well, these are kind of accumulations of, of ideas. They really liked the people in town, they really liked the nature, and then they liked beauty. So then they voted, the, the town council voted that that was unanimous, yeah. Then they liked, what they liked to see in the town, they'd like to see more parks, facilities, and nature. They'd like to see more businesses, and they'd like to see more community services. So then, about when that vote was gonna happen, they, you know, were talking about what is a community service, so. Someone said they wanted to have an M and M concert, so they got excited.
And, and M and M concert venue.
Yes, venue.
Yes.
Then someone also said they wanted the animal shelter, and I think there was a lot of support for that, so yeah, they are very excited about community service. Uh, so that was unanimous, those, those clusters of ideas, um, and then the, the next vote was, uh, should. They continue to have a third grade class come here, would they like to recommend that? Be like the yearly annual event, and that was unanimous. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I think overall, it's, it's a great visit, um. In terms of the, the tour, um, basically, from. Town hall, uh, Dan led us up to the levee, the stock over at the canal basin square. Yeah, talked about the, uh, flood levels, the marines, yeah. Illustrated about the canal and the history, then went to the pump house. They got really excited to go into the pump house. They thought it was quite unique. I stayed outside and was talking about fast food restaurants because that's what the boys and girls, but we really wanna get voted on. This group, it wasn't as key on fast food. They, they were more interested in Mexican restaurants and so, so on, so forth, yeah. Um, and then when we were on the levee towards the end, then the train came by, so that was, that was exciting, yeah.
Did they all get sidetracked and wanna watch the train and?
We, we made time for that, we'd see, yeah. The one, the one thing I will say on a, on a personal note. At the town council, I often say. We need to plan for the future, the boys and girls club, and these third graders are the future, and it was. Fun on the one hand, because actually both groups really did contribute interesting ideas, like they were in this, the third graders actually did. Have some really interesting thoughts. They were more thoughtful than. Uh, maybe somebody might give them credit for. They really had a lot of interesting ideas, and then the other side of it is. We really do have a role as a governing body to welcome little ones into what we do and to excite them. So that they are excited about the town and the future and engage, and actually part of I was trying to. Encourage them, to remind them, they can make a difference, not just in the future, but now, and so anyways, it was. It made me smile too, and it was actually fun. I was actually going later that week, opened up to. The hundreds of, couple hundred other people who do our tours across the world, and it was fun to have just been with a group of. Fun, energized. They were energized. The, the boys and girls club, we had to kind of win them over, then they were really good. These, these third graders were ready to roll. They just had to keep them, had to keep on top of them, but they did great. I thought they had a good time. I thought they learned a lot, and it was. Every once in a while, there's something that we do that's just a lot of fun. That was a lot of fun.
Good.
Yeah, well, thank you, Dan, for suggesting that we engage with youth. I think these are two excellent events, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Dan.
If I was a third grader, I would definitely remember this in the, in the far future. It was a memorable experience. Okay, so, uh. All of these highlights will be documented in, in the documents, okay? And like Dan mentioned, there's a lot of, of thought that they, they talked about, um. Meaningful, you know, they, they talked about housing for the homeless. Um, more kindness. More libraries.
Oh, just a question. Can you, Javier, can you put it in order? We could use a big dose of confidence. Could you, you know, where we can get that?
Overgot it?
No, that's a, we need to get up and pre-. We actually have a lot of here, which is good, but keeping it on supply. It was actually really sweet. I, that was a really neat thing, which they were.
It'd be interesting to do a homeschool group of kids to see the difference, and thank you.
Yeah, this was like the, uh, about hour forty-five minutes in total, so we were moving pretty fast, um. And they had more ideas. We, we literally had to. Cut them off after a while. They, they were really, um, energetic to be here and have a lot of ideas as well. So, uh, yeah, in the future, the principal, Ms. Wells, has some suggestions about how it could be more interactive, she said. I did realize while we were doing the event that, you know. Choosing students that they voted for themselves to go up on the dais, but, um. You know, the ones that weren't voted for to go on town council, there were about three of them. They might feel a little bit sad, but then those three got to be involved in choosing the mayor. So we can make it a little bit more inclusive in a way and good natured, I guess. May- maybe that's how I interpret her comments about being more. Be more, uh, interacting. Is that what she said, yeah? So that's just, uh, something that could happen every year, I think, right? Okay. That is in place, yes. So, uh, moving on to engagement with Buckingham County, so just a, just a quick question. We had somebody in the audience to remind him, and ask somebody in the audience, what did she think of? Thanks, you have anything she would wanna say? Eleanor, you're here for the, uh, for the girls club event, right?
Which one?
Well, you, you walk around the Scottville Boys and Girls Club, the levely, right? Yeah. You, you'd think it'd be really cool for second or third graders to come here. Every year, right? Have you enjoyed doing it with your dad?
Yeah.
Do you have any, uh, do you have any suggestions for us in terms of the council? Well, she, she didn't have to come tonight. She could've stayed home with mom, but she really wanted to come.
Well, we're glad to see you. Thank you for coming.
That's right.
She thinks they want to invite me to have a reunion, yeah.
Okay, so, um, a few days ago, on, uh, January thirty-first, Javier and I drove down to Buckingham County to the county office. To meet with Mr. Carter and, uh, Mrs. Edmondson, the zoning attorney, and his advisor. So we were really glad to meet with Ms. Carter's, uh, I guess we could say, privileges. And, uh, basically, the purpose of meeting was to coordinate, uh, planning matters, and especially consult regarding this urban development. Area designation that, that we're proposing to call a community planning area. And again, this is one avenue for getting potential grants for the town, so on, so forth. Um, so basically, we provided an overview of this, uh, rationale for the UDA. And we also talked about the transport plan that, uh, we're working towards, and then also the intersection of concern. So. I did notice in the Buckingham County comp plan that they have a growth corridor, the long route one. But they don't call it a UDA, they clarify it's just a growth corridor. So here's an image of that in our comp plan. Their, their comp plan is being updated. It was about the twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, and they're in process of updating it. The major update will be regarding the solar policy will be included. But you can see this growth corridor here in the yellow. There's two areas along twenty headed north. Right up to touching Scottsville.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um, and the zoning administrator said that this is mainly because they anticipated future growth along that corridor. Because of accessibility to, uh, Alabama County, because they have a lot of commuters. That work at places such as the hospital, so.
Is there any commercial within that, or are we providing services for that community, those communities?
Along that portion, there's not the same, there's really not any commercial, nothing close to what we provide.
Right, so, so again, that just goes to show how important our commercial district is and little continuity.
Yeah, there is Scottsville hardware in Buckingham County. You might be familiar with that. I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it's somewhere. Somewhere there around here, around that, that white, white rock. They already turn up towards the old Scottsville dump. Um, but yeah, this is just one example. I did a word search in their company's document, and, uh, this is the most significant because it's back for the town. And it, it does speak to the, the, you know, need or, uh, you know. Rationale of designated Scottsville as a urban development area, community planning.
One of the things you may or may not know would be that James River reeling and rafting, when they. Do their river run, they are taking people from Scottsville over to the other side of the river when they drop, so we, we're. There's, there's a route, so to speak, that's involved with the local business that takes people over there to get their load back.
And picks them up and, well, they slow sack the Scots. Oh, oh, they, they drop them off and then they float down river.
Right, there's the James River runners who drop off in Warren Ferry to come back to Patton Ferry. But these guys, I, I mentioned it only because this is, this is actually getting to Buckingham, so they cross over. One of our businesses regularly uses the. Bridge and gets people over, so it's just a reminder that they might have an interest. In a sense, just recognizing that those people who come here are also utilizing aspects of their account, so to speak, or that quarter.
Well, what was interesting was, uh, that Mr. Carter and Ms. Edmondson, they really know Scottsville well. Just sort of Carter's first job was at a tire factory.
Was Mr. Carter, is he married to the lady who just retired? Oh, okay, I was like, that would be really.
This brother, he, who was working for several months, uh, she worked at, at the Buckingham County for about thirty years.
Okay.
Mr. Carter started around fifteen years ago.
Okay.
And then rose to become the administrator, but no, no relation.
Okay.
Yeah, um. So basically, um, as I mentioned, Buckingham is fairly up in the comp plan, uh. We asked them one of their concerns, and they said housing costs is probably the most significant for the constituents. And we also mentioned that we're focusing on housing. Um, and then the sore, uh, concerns, uh, they, they recently wrote a new policy. And then they're gonna include that policy into their comp plan formally. That's the most significant update, they said. Uh, overall, the meeting was, uh, pretty short and sharp and simple. But we are required to consult them because Buckingham County touches the town on the Havana side. Side, border, border, but we don't touch on the, uh, Alabama County.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Alright, so this is, you know, Javier and I went down to the Elmore County, uh. You know, archives. So basically, with this boundary adjustment that happened, uh, same time as a fire station. But maybe, uh, I, I assume the rationale is, uh. This green area was added to the town area. That's the, the fire station, so that's now included in the town. But then this strip of blue here along the river was subtracted from the town.
So our town border ends on the shoreline. And then it becomes back into Elmore County because the county used to buy, what, equidistant on the river. So we have this little portion like that, but it isn't, but that's not the case in Havana.
Yeah, so Havana is currently, uh, goes.
Right, so who does it belong to?
Alamo.
Alamo, so the river on the Alamo side belongs to Alamo County.
Okay, I got you.
But one of the questions, Lincoln, that I, I was also pulling it up here. The dramatic. Um, difference in per capita income in the Kentland County, it's like Alamo is pretty high. Buckingham's pretty much almost at the bottom state, so. How do they? See Scottsville in terms of how we impact that? One of the conversations we had as a town council, when we would have issues of low income housing. One of the obvious things is you have Buckingham County, but we're the. Dramatic difference, so how do they see it as county officials related to our role and them, and their. Our impact on them, because our economic strength is much stronger than their, than their. It just is.
Well, they started their explanation by saying that northern Buckingham County has a tremendous number of commuters. And those are going towards the UVA hospital or other, other jobs. Basically, uh, and, um, we, when we're talking about the transport plan, they do understand that. Highway twenty has a lot of intersection bottlenecks. Relatively speaking for Scottsville, they're really, the very hardware street and valley, that intersection junction, we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, but in terms of specifics, in terms of economics, uh. They just talk about community. They talk about people in Buckingham going to, you know, Alabama County for jobs.
Well, that's, that, that is, that is the bottom line, and we think it's, is it, what, seven thousand, how many cars a day?
It was eight, one thousand five thousand.
So again, one of the recommendations in that comp plan, uh, might be to. Basically, to conduct some sort of economic study to, to, to put a number to that. To those commuters, and then the, the economic value of Scottsville. Is it all passenger Scottsville going up to? Charlotteville, or is it stopping in, in Scottsville for gas and other things?
It'd be interesting to note also, I don't know the percentage. Of people who through COVID now work at home. I happen to be one of them, but. What percentage that would be for? The county of Alamo, what a percentage would it be in Buckingham, because that number actually was, might be slightly lower, in other words. So I'd be interested to know what it may be that the service industry that they provide. May not, well, obviously, those industries, you have to be in person.
They have less access to internet. And.
The mental board, that would, you know.
They, they did mention that, uh, one draw for Scottsville is the internet, um, access, yeah.
It's ironic.
Connectivity, um. But again, this. This was a simple meeting, uh, but I think Javier, you built a connection with Mr. Carter, so in the future, that will be somewhat regular.
And I think it's, you know, as Lincoln brought it up, it's a. Required, but it should be a practice for us.
I just think we haven't done as much in the past, yeah, that's one.
And I, I mean, Lincoln doesn't even, they had told me that, in many ways. Um. They did bring up that when they, at least as planners, when they were thinking about housing down there, that, uh. The new reality of that remote work was an aspect they had thought about, uh, Ms. Edmondson just brought that up in passing. Uh, but I think Lincoln kinda hits on a point. I think some people that end up investing here are looking at something that isn't. Immediately visible in some demographic information for some economic study. Uh, so I think Lincoln's on the right track, uh, bringing it up to planning commission. About something we can kind of shore up and, cuz we, we all know that in here or over here. Uh, what, how valuable our location is between all the towns, so. I'll try to keep doing the same with Buckingham too, we made a connection. Uh, they really are, as ever, when they started telling us everything about each quarter, we got sidetracked talking about bad traffic in town. Now, like, oh, you know, you don't learn anything different.
Yeah.
Is Buckingham eligible to resource our food bank pickup in the farmer's market?
Don't, no, exactly, for Blue Ridge. I don't know how far south, Blue Ridge Network.
And like the library, they have a relationship, even though Buckingham County is not part of the regional library.
Okay.
They did have a relationship, uh, with those residents.
And the Boys and Girls Club, same way.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. So yeah, this seeks to that regional question of how is Scottville still, uh, the rural area? So once again, I think that's an excellent point that we bring up to Britsfield, uh, and I think, A, the new type of fuel gassing at the washings. Is, uh, might be a, a big stop, a little bit, maybe the folks that are commuting, uh, don't see the existing gas stations as having a lot of amenities, perhaps, because of the size. But maybe they will stop more often at the. The, the food line and that, that popular town because of the gas issue.
And the Mexican.
So that, and the Mexican restaurant. So, so again, now the simple meeting, but if there's any larger follow-up questions, uh, I think Javier will, will deal with Mr. Carter. Okay. So this is just, uh, Alamo County gas. So you can see that, that job. So the, the boundary used to go all the way. To the middle of the river, but now it's pulled, pulled back to the shoreline. And that happened again when the fire station was added to the town area. So this was previously not part of town until. Twenty twenty-one.
We used to get a lot more use out of looking for river than we do now.
But as I said, again, one of those updates for the zoning, zoning map to have the boundary. Okay. So moving on to the consequences of Alamo Food Bank. So basically, uh, the Alamo moving is happening tomorrow at eleven in here. They offered to come down, which I think is a big message. Very nice. Um, there is a new Alamo County planning director. I don't anticipate him coming. He wasn't on the attendees list, uh, but his name's. Michael, he used to live around this area. He was working for VDO for a few years. He actually came to our VDO roundtable back in July.
Is this the Pruitt?
No, the roots are supervising.
Okay.
He, he arrived, uh, he got caught up in something, said facing that direction, remember?
I don't.
Okay.
But anyway.
Detail.
So, uh, on the agenda is whether to share, uh, Alamo County, uh, progress on the campaign plan about this urban development area. Uh, talking about these intersections. Um, and then this neighborhood approach. I have a, a, a proposed map of these neighborhoods we talked about. How can we? Distribute different intentions for character in, in neighborhoods in Scottsville. Uh, we want to hear about the AC forty-four progress. And we had a meeting with them back in, um, you know, around September, um. I know the chair was there and Javier and I were there in person. Um, you know, we commented that Scottsville was, was not shown on some of the AC forty-four maps. So, so, yeah. And then we want to have a little more technical discussion, uh. On February twelfth, it's going to be AC forty-four event at Yancy. Uh, I have a slide on that in a minute. Uh, that it'd be great to have town representation. Uh, the county road intersection ranking process, I think it would be very good for us to find out, as that we previously talked. Uh, the James River Road, Route twenty, uh, intersection is number eighty-nine on the calendar this, the last I checked. So it's never going to get improved based on county laws. It is so low on a priority compared to other intersections in town. So how, how can we understand those, uh, you know, statistics and advocate in a certain way to, to get that intersection bumped up? And part of the, uh, statistics is, you know, I take tolerance, right? So it's a lot of intersections. So we of course don't want that to happen. Okay. And then after the intersection, really, uh, one thing Javier and I have been talking about is the street buffer requirements. The county has street buffer requirements. And we want to better understand how those apply to Scottsville. Um, because Scottsville has its own planning. Uh, county planning is not, you know, is not applicable here. So does that mean a stream buffer is applicable here or not applicable?
I found that it is. Because I think they, like, the DEQ still has to sign off on everything and, and wouldn't that be part of DEQ?
So I think the question for us will be, and we'll use this opportunity as I'm learning also, see where that next is going. Because you are right, but we're just there zone.
This would be a great, excellent topic of a photo, having that conversation.
And I, I think we can hit it on the right spot because it's. Always to the point we, we talked about the starters for stations for thinking, anything that could come down with the future.
Absolutely. Because that came up a lot during the company conversations over the summer. People are very concerned about that, understandably. So it's awesome.
Yeah. And, and then, you know, in our existing comp plan, I was, you know, recently, you know, looking at where stream buffers would, would fit in. Uh, there's something about critical slopes. So there's a, there's a discrepancy of, you know, something between twenty percent in one place. And twenty-five percent. I know that's a small percentage, but it's just a discrepancy in our document, you know? Um, so this will be buffer requirements, uh, because it's not in the document right now. We just need to, to give guidance and a recommendation. If it's not included in Scottsville, uh. That we need to recommend that the ordinance adopted K S A P now. Because of, of big developments such as, uh, in the northeast part of town, uh, not clearly having a stream buffer requirement could be, uh. A big problem. There, there's some things we're pushing forward in the comp plan.
Is, have we ever asked the county if Van Cleve could be on their, um, maps for parks?
No.
Would be nice.
Not to my knowledge.
To bring tourism in. I mean. Right. To get people from Tody or, you know, people hiking and new trails or fishing. That brings people to different communities. We can get Van Cleve in there, man.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, that actually raises something, Liz, that I didn't even, all those conversations didn't. Even think about saying that when we adopted the name Scottsville Lake, I don't know, maybe now about ten years ago.
I thought it was raccoon again. I was on the table as a joke.
Um, it was, it was, but well, at the time, the official name was the Men Creek.
Stop it.
Yeah. That was, that's what it was called. That was the official, we had to, actually, that was one of my. Think we moved, we got the votes, we turned it into Scottsville Lake. But it takes a long time for it to be officially recognized in different government agencies. And it may be. I'm not sure if there's anything we have to do here. Even the department like now Wildlife Resources. Even for several years, they would say the trout were stocked in Scottsville Lake, normally known as. Men Creek Camp. I mean. It, I mean, but that's, some people called it lots of different things, but that was the official name. It's only a dog. But, but all that to say. It's, if you look at, one of the weird things about it, I believe it's still Google. You look, you don't see Scottsville Lake because it's not there. Yeah. It's just so. Some of it is, we still need to get that name. Recognized and it's, they're, they're all kind of like somebody recognizes it than somebody else does, but that particular name is helpful. One of the reasons of recognizing it is, again, even the reason we showed it, it's pretty obvious, right? Scottsville Lakes, where is Scottsville Lake? It's in Scottsville. And it's, but it's helpful to have that name and if you see the problem, there's, there's the problem.
Talk about nice town.
So that's Scottsville Lake, but there's no.
Yeah. So, so my, so my, I, I didn't, there was some research I did on it long ago. It was something like. You have to go to the, just to live near these guys, the National, whatever they're called in Rust, the Geological Survey. And anyways, oh, but the other way to do it is have different government agencies quote from it. So it might be helpful to. Follow up to live the point. As we get other agencies saying something about Scottsville Lake or something about, I think it's helpful. Even if it's Buckingham County, Flavanna County, whoever.
Or even free consultation.
Yeah.
I think Dan's hitting on a good point, um. As, oh, I forgot my point. Um, as a recommendation, as a recommendation. Uh, because that could be an item that, that was brought up in street plan. Put that out and then our community engagement. Uh, essentially this is some respect that's for them also. Uh, because we do have a lot of valuables, uh, what's it? After recreation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so even having a recommendation and that being cataloged, not only with the future plan, but then to our comp plan as a part. Uh, because it provides some direction as we go five years, twenty years forward.
I mean, to, one of the, this may sound weird to say it this way, but when the Department of Game and then the Fishers, sorry, Department of Wildlife Research, we got a new name. When they put trout eight times a year, roughly they put about two hundred trout in. That's about twelve hundred dollars worth of. Trout they put in eight times a year, every, and, and I mentioned that again, just to say it's a resource since it began. We fishermen follow that, but we ourselves sometimes don't follow that. And it's. Goes wider to even like you showed in the doc there, that's a whole other level of usage that we need to. Going back to the signage and other things that we have to revain before the Parks Committee can look at in future.
So then, uh, mentioning this AC forty-four event, um, fourth of February, the Yancy Community Center. Javier and I are going to be out, out of town, not at the same place. But, um, it, it would be great if, uh, someone was able to go, um. We can get a preview of what they're going to talk about or ask maybe tomorrow during the meeting, but, um. I foresee, you know, they've been talking a lot about Crossroads Communities and this is the map that they covered that Scottsville was mentioned. But I don't think they're going to name Scottsville Crossroads, but I think they might name it a rezonia. It's my intuition. I, I put that in italic, that text right there. But everything else is going there, Jayden. Um. So it'd be great to kind of have eyes and ears there if anyone's able to join.
What time is it? Three to five.
And just thinking about, uh, Nancy and its broader picture, you know, Ed Brooks from Anthony, uh, Community Center in County. He did come to our walkability, uh, workshop. He talked a lot about, uh, potentially, you know, my name is Old Rail Corridor between Scottsville and Yancy. Um, so that's one thing that's kind of pinned on our transport plan. And there's a lot of talk about in the county documents about Gansy Westward to other places, but not a lot of talk about. Yancy to Scottsville. Yeah.
Dan was talking about, uh, like putting in a bike trail.
It's along that same grid, yeah. Whether it be some sort of recreational use along the Old Rail Corridor.
One of the things, just a quick, to my understanding, perfectly, if I'm wrong about this, that one of the differences about that corridor though. With that wasn't really retained, that's not mostly on private land. Is that not correct?
I think they're using CSS from what, I don't have documentation, so much as asking the allow. Does that sound correct?
Well, it's so old. We're talking like the Nelson is Alamo, but it goes back like a hundred years. So it's different than CSS which is here. That's, that's.
Yeah, we didn't talk in any detail about it, but I do remember hearing something about easements and having to. Obtaining them and how complicated that would be. So I don't.
It's private land, it's my point.
Yeah.
Like it, like my daughter lives right across the street from the Nattam where the train station used to be. I mean, that's a hundred years ago again, or, or seven years ago.
Yeah.
Do you think they're celebrating Nancy more just as more of a DEI initiative for the county versus? A slighted us.
Uh, I think it's, uh, more highlighting, uh, a place rather than drawing down on a place.
Yeah.
That'd be my interpretation. Highlighting Yancy, but not draw, not intending to draw down on.
Yes, yeah.
Also, we're, we're all in town, so. AC forty-four county.
Right.
We're, we're, we're unique in the whole of town too, so.
Yeah. Uh, but we'll see how, how we show Scottsville, um, on the future maps. I think I got that pretty fast.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay. Um, so Flavanna, here's the agenda for, for Flavanna. Um, basically, uh, the Flavanna Planning Director, Mr. Miles. Got to recently, we did not know. So I reached out to Mr. Miles and suddenly the Assistant Administrator for the County responded. She was really, uh, quick to respond, wanted to meet last week, but, uh, had to reschedule at the last moment. So basically, uh, since we haven't scheduled this Flavanna meeting, that maybe the first question is who would. If anyone would like to attend with Javier and I. And if so, we can schedule out everyone's availability. Flavanna is important because, uh, besides breaking them on the content and understanding their content costs, it was taking a very long time. I'm interested to find out the story there. News for the staff turnover. But, um, you know, consulting them on the urban development area and then also understanding if and why Flavanna, that, that side of the town. Why is it, because it still has an urban development area on the books? This, why is this area, you know, in some of the state of Virginia websites, why does it have an urban development area right now? So we were talking to Buckingham about this and Buckingham thinks that, yeah, they designated that area, um, into Flavanna, but you know, never followed up on. You know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a potential tool they could use in the future, but it never took off.
Is that where they were going to build like the apartments historically?
I heard there was soccer.
Yeah.
I probably know the application.
Scottsville residents raised cane about it and it got shut down.
So what, what could have happened? This urban development area was designated, the town was there consulted and it just stayed on the books and. You know, staff turned on with Flavanna and it just.
Yeah.
It's continued.
Yeah, but the, in, in the same way that we discussed it, it, it ends up being a tool you have in your arsenal, especially, or in your belt. I have to make a lesson, uh, bell coast. Um, for especially transportation. Um. So I think it's, it's a useful tool. I'm assuming that's their intention and that it kind of got lost.
So, uh, other technical things to talk about is the Flavanna Boundary in a GIS. It's, it's not as, as clear as the Alamo County. Boundary on the side. Um, and then, uh, talking about the Alamo County Services clearly actually serving part of Flavanna. The previous planning director didn't know that. Yeah. So they don't have any of that Alamo County Service Cities. Like, uh, we just started seeing Mr. Quick's application, actually, that Mr. Quick's lot. Was served by Alamo County, uh, sewer and water. Yeah. So that'd be good just for, uh, to enable future development, people knowing what's there and what's not, uh, what's possible. And also talking on the last point about slope and soil erosion, the street button regulations in Flavanna. Because we already talked about Alamo Mall. Maybe it's a little clearer there, but we haven't talked about Flavanna's side. Understanding how they approach, approach the matter. Okay. So again, if anyone, uh, would definitely like to attend, just let us know. Otherwise, uh, Javier and I would just focus on. Okay, Lisa. Thank you. So now, uh. I'd just like to talk briefly about the Initiative Capital Improvement Program feedback. I, uh, after I presented that to this body, uh, last month. I, I then, uh, attended the town council work session. And their general feedback, if I could, you know, summarize was, you know, this is a positive addition. We haven't had a. A capital improvement program in the comp plan before. The Government Services Committee has been working on a document or an Excel file sort of like this. I was talking to Laura Malucia a few days ago and when she was on, so she remembers working with some sort of capital improvement program, but it never was. Kind of formalized into an actual comp plan or a document. Yeah. Um, then there was a lot of question about what items to include in this capital improvement and, you know, infrastructure program. Basically, the conclusion was that, and town administrator will separately compile a police, uh, long-term budget. Uh, and then also maintenance concerns like repaying the building here, uh, roofs, so on and so forth. That aren't necessarily termed as capital improvements. Yeah. So those will be separate, but still be considered in the wider picture. So the town's capital improvement program will kind of follow the latest document that I sent that it's like anticipating. Uh, major infrastructure, uh, infrastructure improvements at intersections. The studies, but also the, the upgrading of the intersections, uh, you know, sidewalks, uh, trails, so on and so forth. Uh, Ms. Moore suggested generator for this building to be included. And since that's a new item, it kind of links in with. The, um, community emergency preparedness, um, that, that community has been talking about. Um, and again, this is just a suggestive list to, to consider. It's not actually. You know, approving any budget. It's, it's a budgetary process, but looking at five years in the horizon. But I think an important thing is that, uh, the town council is, you know, thinks it's a good idea to annually update the capital improvement program. And, uh, usually the capital improvement program for planning purposes only gets to be updated every five years. But if it's updated every year, it's a simple document. That will feed into the budget process. So this year it's actually been very timely so that. That will feed into the budget process, so this year it's actually been very timely, so that. Capital improvement program has kind of made its its way around. It's feeding right into the budget process, which is happening right now, obvious preparing the budget, so it's one big picture. Uh but to be able to potentially update the capital improvement program every year, uh the town law and Mr. Bowman suggested that. Don't include the document in the actual front of the conflict and only include it in the appendix. So we can talk about the capital improvement program in the document, but the actual numbers and things we put in the appendix. So it could be swapped out every year, whatever the the town issues. And it doesn't impact the whole conflict, and you don't have want to have to re-approve the conflict every year just because you want to change the. The figure on sidewalks, right? So that's why he suggested the the actual Excel chart is just an appendix. Okay?
Sounds good.
Transportation plan, so this is the slide we we showed to uh Buckingham County of uh. Well, we kind of understand the major intersection concerns for for the town right now. Uh so again, this transportation plan is training, is getting ready for growth, so we understand that. You know, there might. Be some development in the future, but there's already some development that's pretty much happening, that's Bird Street, for instance, is up and up. Becoming, it's there through loops, uh so on so forth, so these two, in their association with James River Road and Route twenty. Uh we already know that has a lot of concerns, for instance, the Crown of the Road when you're when you're coming up, uh it's very difficult to to see. Route twenty does not stop, uh you know, Tiger is almost open up and there's gonna be a lot more people turning in. To go to Tiger, you know, and the Wash there. Uh and then if you add in a whole lot of new development in northeast of town, you can have a lot more traffic at that intersection. So we learned recently that VDOT is gonna do a study there. So they've heard this, uh they they sense this coming, uh so that.
They're gonna do a study there after. What, when are they gonna do a study there?
So I just started hearing about a traffic study up there.
Okay.
Anticipating more.
Because wouldn't the traffic study have been submitted along with the site plan? When that was filed like two years ago, now maybe not.
I can't remember because that was right when I was coming on board.
Well, and and whatever it was, the traffic would have been below their, you know, the the trigger point for their. Higher people's studies, so.
I need to touch base with them more soon, especially in the monthly meeting, see some of the intentions, my. My best guess is that they're seeing more, they're predicting more congestion, and then they'll do the study. In their very utilitarian way that they approach that stuff.
Right.
Can they also clearly mark that intersection, the the stop signs as two-way stop signs? I brought that, yeah, I brought that up before.
I know we've had this conversation, I remember that you puzzled about.
So twenty goes through, and if I'm pulling up and taking a left to go to the school in the morning. And somebody is coming, if there's twenty cars going straight. All twenty of those cars that are coming across the intersection that are going straight have the right of way. I have to sit there, everybody, most people treat it as a. As a two-way stop, it's not a two-way stop, I have gotten. Very rude hand gestures when I go because I have the right of way going straight.
She, since it's less conflict and more.
Yeah.
Would you write it in an email so I can also.
Yes.
Say a commissioner has.
Yes, because people, yeah, I and I, you know, I'm just wait, a and it, you know, you do the little dance. You're like, are you gonna go broadside me or like? I hate that, and if it was just clearly marked, then everybody could tr- treat it the same way. But some people know the rule and a lot of people don't.
Similar to Bird Street, that's the conversation about two, three, four.
Yeah, okay.
I think they are dropping a tree there and doing some work to make it more visible.
Oh, okay.
For the school buses too, right, Nancy's yard, they're dropping a big tree. We love trees, but the school buses are hitting it, I guess. It's it's a really tight, so that tree's coming down soon.
The other section uh that's concerned, particularly the northeast part of the town, especially the developers' hardware, uh street and that flows. Especially because of the geometry of the intersection and the sidelines. Yeah. Uh and of course, there's other intersections that we can talk about, but uh my recommendation would be these are the highlights. The most important.
Only interesting is that intersection is a big concern for her too, I'll share this with her, rumble strips. You know.
I'm talking about VDOT on July thirty first of the roundtable we had here, it's a bit, you know, they admitted the positive made that aspects of rumble strips. A, the noise, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Just go for ten. So what is happening with this here, these are.
So these uh these will go into the transportation plan that I need to to write up, that most. Uh I propose to leave that.
That goes in the conflict.
Yes, the highlights of the focus on roads.
Okay.
These intersections.
Well, what about Bird and?
We, I mean, we could have, one one way of going about it, we could have uh, you know, these highlight intersections. Plus a secondary tier of intersections. Trouble is, we have a lot of intersections that are concerning, right? Bird, um you know, anything in the region of the tire factory that might be impacted by development there in the future.
Yeah, has there been any talk about what they're doing with that property? Any rumblings?
You mean about the?
No, the tire factory, because it's, I mean, I I heard. Before that they were thinking about turning it into an industrial complex.
I think the most recent about it is basically Dr. Hurd's still doing, he still has a lot of stuff in.
So so the next slide uh is. A new portal from VDOT, they they update their midterm planning periodically, uh which just came out a few days ago. And on this portal, it talks about all the uh inter- intersections of concern in in Virginia.
Is it actually called Vtrans?
Yeah, so there's an agency uh different from VDOT, and it does all the long-term planning for the state. So Dtrans, who who's the same people that administer uh the urban development areas and those those gap grants. So that's the grant that we missed out on the county level and we didn't get that funding. Um so I called them and they said, all you all you need is that letter from the county, we're gonna give you the big grant. But that's that's these people, they're also called OB, Office of Policy and blah blah blah. But um yeah, so if you zoom out, you know, Alamo City has, especially in the green area, has a lot of green intersection better of concern. Buckingham even has an intersection of concern, uh I believe it's in front of the McDowell's. But Scottville has no intersections of concern. So that's another, we we, I would recommend we find out what these metrics are and is it all about numbers or is it also about? Okay, so next, uh I'd like to recommend, talk about the neighborhood approach, and I believe Mr. Grisfield, he brought up this concept uh several months ago. So um it's a way of not talking about something in the. Whole area of town, like let's talk about growth, for instance, but we found out from the surveys, a lot of people, basketball people in town and also out of town. Uh favor growth, but once we have a focus fifty seventy, it matters where the growth is, right? So same thing about, you know, whether it be growth, whether it be small town, how can we start thinking about it? In different zones of the town, okay? So I just put on the, I'll call it the zoning map, so it's different neighborhood names. So we're already quite familiar with downtown. Uh East River is a name that came up throughout our engagements. I think Kelly might have mentioned that one during one of our really early events, you know, what what name of the Flavina side. Uh rather than just the Flavina side, for instance, could it be something like East River? Uh and then East Village is is now pretty much a common term, um there's also Lemon and also. It's also referred to as Pollet Town, I mean. Doesn't need to have an official name, how does that differ from hardware, hardware street or hardware that area? Um you know, Uptown is a pretty common name, but if we want to differentiate what's. What character does the conflict recognize in Uptown versus Midtown or the hardware area, do we need to kind of drive some zones? And then west, west downtown, so I'll just show the west downtown small area plan. It has on the next slide a boundary that it draws of what what west uh downtown is for that. And it includes all all the way over to uh this side of Valley Street. Uh you you can see this red line, you know, it's drawn in there, but. You know, it's just a question of for the future of the conflict, does the town or should it? Talk about different characters for the different areas, and if so, we we might need naming, yeah.
I vote no, I think we, I think it's already like. An appropriate level of detail, I think, like we, in all of our conversations, we've done a great job of. Breaking down between the different principles and rules, I think that's like a perfect level of detail, I don't know that we need to. Get more specific to the neighborhoods and also, you normally, seven hundred.
Five hundred and twenty-four based on the last incident.
Well, I was I was thinking about the geographical weight acreage and miles, so you know, people were seven hundred and ninety. Acres in town, so I don't really think we need to go crazy with this. It was helpful for the small area plan, but I don't really think that we need to do a lot more. Planning along those, you know, that line.
I I would agree, it would it would add a partial layer of complexity, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in favor of less complexity and.
That Facebook is a great idea.
Well, people on Facebook have already told us that, you know, we're really self-important by using terms like west downtown. And we're such a small town and, you know, who do we think we are, I remember that comment from years back.
And the other complexity is if you draw a line between um uptown and midtown, you know. And you put a house on one side of the line and on the other side, and that creates controversy.
Yeah, so it's hard to draw that distinction, yeah.
So.
Nice idea.
Yeah.
And and I think we can adopt these terms in formal, you know, we already have uptown, west downtown, downtown, east river, Pollet Town. So certainly East Village, I just don't know that we need to get into that on the conflict.
Okay, so we can basically, if I'm hearing is the guidance is we can refer to them in the text as. Ideas are such when needed, but not to clearly show it on a map. Uh and not to to have boundaries, stuff like that, okay.
So can we, um do we envision this coming up a lot in the text? I mean, I know it has come up in the past conflict with the west downtown.
Yeah, so the previous conflict doesn't have the west downtown document that included or attached to mention that it hadn't been done yet.
Right.
Yeah, so um basically that document, it's not a conflict, of course, you have to. Quite clearly mentions uh that, you know, that's a small area plan, it doesn't have as much legal weight. Uh here it is, this, what is an SAP, small area plan? So, yeah, so, I mean, I think. The intention has been just to, you know, mention this document and reference it and put, make a link to it, of course, um. And say that this was a focused look at that portion of the town, you know.
Being that it's undeveloped and and really needed extra work on the planning.
Yeah, but I mean, Mr. Lawless, he was uh, you know, careful of phrasing, you know. That matter regarding the tire factories, we'd say, he was deliberately mentioning that, you know.
You know what you could do, Lincoln, that is following up to what our chair has said, is it could be something like. The town may want to consider in future years a neighborhood approach. It was decided in this version of the conflict not to go into that, in other words, make a note that. There could be values to approach the town, but at the moment, it's not considered necessary to do it because. Of just keeping it, you know, some aspect of it where, because again, when you look at these things in the future, it may make sense. May not make sense, but there there is value in understanding that, again, going back to the people of. Pollet Town have very specific interest in what's happening. With that aspect of future development and people in other parts of town may not have the same level of concern. Same thing down here with Bird Street when things were happening, people here were highly interested. They may not be as interested or concerned about what was happening on the east area and. And and there is some recognition where it's helpful to understand that, but but again, I think, go back to the chair's point. We're still five hundred and twenty-four people versus five hundred thousand people.
Yeah, and. Uh I mean, I can just give you one example, uh during the uh. On the workshop that we had on small town character, someone mentioned uh that uh they really enjoy hearing the roosters. So um and chickens, so. That idea is still um kind of ingrained in the, you know, village residential or rural. Rural area of zoning, but maybe in the future that changes. And then there's, there could be different mechanisms to retain chickens in certain areas of town, but not others, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's just one example I can think of, yeah. But for now, I I would tend to agree, uh Scottsville's not quite there yet, maybe in five years, the next conflict might want to consider something.
Well, and and I see your point, we're we're making reference to some of these little neighborhoods right now. And so if you do throw in that terminology, is it gonna confuse things or people going to say, what do you mean? And if the map's not there, it might, it might seem, but I I would just try, like, let's try not to.
Yeah.
How much time did you spend on this?
Oh, this was about five minutes when when we were talking about.
Okay.
Earlier.
Good. Yeah, so what if we did do this, would it match like uh commercial districts?
Well, this doesn't have any.
It wouldn't match anything zone-wise.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's that takes a lot of work.
That would make it be nice if it did match, so like when I would reference commercial district to matching downtown.
Well, I mean, you would think that we should be primarily concerned with the zoning districts instead of neighborhoods.
That point, I think it would be better for us to spend more time on our feature use map.
Yeah.
I mean, I want Lincoln neighborhood. We're gonna call it Lincoln Lake.
So I I'm just reading this up as it was brought up previously, um but I I think this is an excellent discussion because uh maybe. Yeah, we've tried not to focus on these areas of town, but when needed, like when we really want to talk about. Lemon or Pollet Town, we we mentioned that because it's common terminology.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying, really do, um. I just don't want to make it too complicated.
Actually, yeah. Okay.
I didn't know we.
Remaining work, yes, okay, so I understand you have some some results from the parcels study, but.
Yeah, so, oh my goodness, it was um, it it's definitely in the reveal, putting all that together because, well, for one thing, these two counties. They each export their data very differently, and there's a lot of lands that isn't developed. So there's no um United States postal address, so it's just known as a parcel. So looking at the data when it's exported, you don't know where that parcel's located. So in in some cases, it doesn't even tell you the size, like my house in a lot of Pollet Town is listed as zero acres, it's not. Point four, point five, so when I'm summing up the total of all the land in town, I'm still missing about ten percent of the land. Um but it wa- it was really painful to go through all of that, but I think I finally, and the other thing is, the Alamo County data. And the other thing is the Alcorn County data. Took a while and I've used GIS a lot over the years, but it took me a while to figure out how to export the town of Scottsville. And I just got an email from um the GIS guy. At three forty and just see now, but um hopefully when I review his email, it matches what I came up with. Now that it's all been um put on some Excel spreadsheet. Now we have to figure out what's commercial and what's residential. Because that doesn't export from the GIS unless I'm missing something. It does in um. I was gonna say I think Louvanna might, but um so we'll see.
Louvanna zoning, so.
I'm sorry?
It's also Louvanna zoning on that side. Cause I've noticed the same thing trying to use GIS before.
Well, fortunately, most of Louvanna is residential or agriculture, it's not commercial. So I guess it will make it easier for us to figure out Louvanna, plus we're only talking about thirty or forty parcels. Um so yeah, it's kind of painful, it's kind of painful, but um Nancy Gill had indicated that she has something. That shows residential and commercial, so maybe. Um I I'm trying to get with her, I don't know what uh shake her data's in, it's ready to be, you know, look better. Yeah, I I've been communicating with her, so we'll hopefully get to where we can collaborate on it.
So it's a lot, I mean, this is just from the existing company, there's a lot of detail there, of course, with all the locks, like these are the existing uses, but. The other challenge is we haven't been able to find this GIS file. From the batch that we have, the hard drops that we have. So uh I think the study that you're doing is extremely useful.
Yes, and and we'll save it for future um.
Future legends.
Analysis, you know, the the names and dates of transfers and the dollar values, that's all going to change, but. Parcels really shouldn't change very much, rarely do you see people combining and separating parcels. Um the hard part is going to be figuring out what's occupied and what's not. The zoning is easy enough because you can go to the GIS and just copy and paste the um parcel ID, it's tedious. Cause you're talking about. Four hundred parcels at least. Um but you know, that's something that you can obtain, it's just gonna take some time, but whether it's occupied or vacant, it's gonna be a lot more. And whether it's um, you know, two. Two units or three units as opposed to just one, one house, that's gonna be harder. Question. Um the way I see it, we're looking for residential, commercial, vacant residential, vacant commercial.
What about abandoned?
Well, that's that would be residential or commercial. We could class it, we could then, I'm just thinking about the zoning.
Well, this is that 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 plan, existing land use map that needs to be updated and we don't have the GIS file. But you can see it's it's a little bit more varied than the zoning map, right, of course, um. But, you know, ideally we could follow this existing legend, but I know that's very fine-grained.
Okay, institutional, okay.
Uh for instance, you know, the the rear of the conflict, the existing document recommends uh light industrial and. Uh heavy industrial be merged into one man, so that's why. There's just one industrial, we only have one industrial area. For zoning, but for instance, this. Matt puts some industrial over there. Looks like next to Mr. Quitzlott. So my my challenge is, you know, how how do we, is it possible to even. Grounds through that, is is that the role of the planning commission or? The time even, it's challenging, right?
Well, I I mean, what was the original intent, Town Council wanted to know what the breakdown of our. Land was in residential and commercial, I mean.
I I think the intent would be, uh and it probably has been to to see the reality on the ground. Versus the aspirations of the zoning map or the future conflict.
So then we're interested in what's already developed, we're not so interested in the. Vacant parcels of land, well, that that narrows it down a lot, right now?
Well, you know, if you're living in a town like uh Detroit, Michigan, which has, you know, what percentage of vacant and abandoned lots, they're really concerned.
Yeah.
In Scottsville, uh maybe it's not as much concern about vacant or abandoned buildings.
But you know, Eileen um brought up the. The fact that. If you're looking at land use.
Assets.
Yeah, like the um. Up where the loving oven food truck is, um with those. They they decided to use that land, that vacant land for sheds. And like, you know, really increase the value of that property by selling, you know, doing something with it.
And I think it's it is the. Plan commission carrying out its due diligence by considering. You know, this is, this is the steel fabricator. Is, you know, carrying out an industrial use. But in the in the zoning in the future, it would be seen as commercial, right? So it is important for the planning commission to think about what's there now. And what it foresees in the future there. Cause the the steel fabricer assumes is uh grandparent. So maybe what I suggest, I think this is a really excellent exercise, we just have to put this slightly somewhere. Very clearly this. Whatever Matt has produced is to our best knowledge and information at hand, you know what I mean? Cause I don't think anyone's gonna go trudging it through the backyard or whoever that that is to find out really what they're doing, it's not possible, right? ARB already uh did something like that uh last year. You know, they. They they basically uh overstep their bounds, uh reminded of our guys, yes. So I I again, I I think it's really fruitful and I think it's it's it is a great exercise, but we just. Won't have a hundred percent accuracy, thanks.
Okay, so as I was gonna close my finger is that um Nancy may can help me get us something. And I'll I'll share it with you guys, you could take a look at what I have thus far and and so what else you recommend that I use.
Let's just look at the legend one more time. Reverend should send your family, the family. See, this this breaks it down.
That's that's hard, yeah.
Even more fine-grained in the zoning map. So I I would recommend uh wherever there's doubt, just follow the. The legend of the zoning map. This is going out, of course, doesn't have residential family.
Um that's the zoning map that's on your website?
Well, this is part of a conflict.
Okay, okay.
So this is uh. And this is page. Forty-nine is document, might not be the PDF number, but it's forty-nine. Okay, so that's uh. That's basically answering a lot of these questions that Mr. Heisman was asking, um. And then we already talked about, naturally, we should observe, try to recommend to uh update that in the future, especially at least. Okay, so uh here's here's uh. So uh today is a kid, I don't foresee anything that necessarily need to update uh Town Council at this moment. Let's keep working and then March fourth is the next uh planning mission meeting. So. Uh on my. List decides uh Alamo Rock County uh tomorrow. And then Louvanna is gonna be the week after uh the Blackland Council, that'd be the week of the nineteenth, yeah. So uh. I also need to to do the the transfer plan, um and I will email that around, uh I'll probably send it. One or two days after we leave Louvanna. So now that then we'll give the planning commissions about. Ten days to remove before the next uh meeting. Transport plan.
Transports.
Yeah, transport plan. So um the other important thing is this transfer plan needs to be uh. Uh sent to VDA. And consulted with VDA. If you might have seen the news, uh there's a big controversy now in uh Charlottesville that. Uh this litigation that Charlottesville did not appropriately consult VDA. For their transport plan and uh these. Litigators are saying that basically the conflict should be invalidated. So that's why these consultations like Buckingham and Alamo Rock and Louvanna are. Utterly small matters for us, but it's still important, so even with Buckingham, I followed up with them today by email just to report what was discussed. Record that they had any comments on our urban development area that might be designated.
Good, good, good.
So so that's that.
And would that have to be an in-person meeting with VDA or with an email?
Technically, uh the way that that quote of Virginia is written, uh we send it to them and they would respond with any comments. But of course, you know, since Javier's having a monthly meeting with them already.
Some quarterly.
Uh we. Ball the last quarter, so we could use the next quarter, but. If we want to move this quicker, it'd be better to get a draft and we share it around that monthly.
Okay.
And then meet with them in person to verbally clarify or explain and uh if they're early concerns, then they can feedback to us that. It might be more concerned on our side than their side, actually, yeah. So um. What I've been hearing is, you know, for instance, there's some. Comments on intersections, uh more specifically of fine-grained, which I think is great. Potentially the strategy is we try to put as much detail into this transport plan as possible with our concerns. So so then those are then put on record with VDA, yeah. I think that'd be a strategy, rather than just saying, oh, we're only concerned about two intersections and everything else is great. I I would rather suggest we do more uh. More detail and advocate for a town that more improvements. Okay, so that's that's the transfer plan, uh and then the other um.
So what's the um expected timeframe on that?
Uh so we meet with Louvanna uh the week of the nineteenth, so I can send you the transfer plan on the. The twenty-sixth. So the main reason behind it is. We don't quite know what uh Louvanna has been doing or what their strategy is with this urban development area they have on their site. So I think it's best we hear from them first. And then uh then finally, the draft and training plan, like you know what I have to do.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so the other thing that I my goal to have by the next meeting is um. Basically a recap uh of all of our community engagement events, so this will be uh. One, two, or maybe even three paragraphs written for each of our community engagement events, I think that's important. If if you think that's important to include our community engagement.
Well, I I don't I don't know about three paragraphs for each engagement, is there a way that we could? Cause that's gonna be.
It it is a lot of writing, that's, but let's say we have this limited site time that that uh we see helped facilitate. We can include that as picture. But um. It's just a question, how much detail? Should go into documenting the views of the community.
So I I would say maybe it would be more like. Um no, I wasn't thinking that. But we thought more like um organic with your weaving approach.
Okay.
So rather than specifically talking about each engagement, I thought it would be more addressed in when we talk about. Principles, one, two, three, and we go one, two, three, four. Like integrated into the. That discussion.
Yeah, we could uh. Write in examples, things that we heard from the different events. So when we talk about uh the goal of community connections. We naturally talk about the walkability focus group that we have, like um or when we talk about. Okay, so it won't. It won't be a recap of individual events, uh it'll be woven into the. Principles and goals and how we explain those.
But I but I do think it's worthwhile to put like in the appendix. The different engagements that we have and like the estimated number of people we met with.
Yeah.
All total, like more aggregate.
As as uh. The summary that these events occurred in, they were publicized, people, anyone could come if they wish, um.
Well, to some level, I don't know that. You need to have. A deep, you know, explanation you sign, but I would say at least a mild one, because what it's that really does is it gives you. A representation that it really has had the input from people, and so to so to some level. You want to be able to say at this event, there were thirty people, we did, you know, maybe maybe not three paragraphs, but maybe a paragraph or something, okay.
So like a short, a short summary of each in in the appendix?
Yeah, um. I mean, the location is easy to move around, but the content, I mean, for instance, uh. Let's. Think about one event like uh, you know, walkability, I just mentioned that it's not only sidewalk talking, it's also trails we do a lot of that. And connections between uptown, downtown, you know, midtown, so it's. Okay, so uh I'll just keep it short and sharp to the the highlights and the things that were heard that were. Not not a normal or. Thought about, you know, it's.
You're synthesizing the data, you have the perspective because you've seen. You've heard, you've read, you've done the research, so at this stage, when you finish, you're gonna be giving us. This is how these different things come together to give us then recommendations for what we do, so it's coming together with the different. Aspects of both the the engagement, the dialogue, the supporting agencies, all those things together. Then from that, you're helping us to come back to the points you've already come back to where you're. Coming up with, okay, if we do that and it's this much money, or if we do that, then it means. This priority, so if you're just giving the how it's, cause you have that vantage point, you have a point that most other.
Yeah.
People will never understand, but you're giving us the reasons for it, so.
So a brief summaries of each event plus a gathering of examples for. Important things within the goals and principles, okay?
So I guess this. Makes me wonder what's the larger plan for. Writing this up, because this is a big undertaking, so what's your thought on how you proceed with it?
Well, Javier and I have already uh edited a vast majority of the existing texts. And highlighted a lot of. Uh places and we, you know, made updates to uh old discrepancies and so on and so forth, so it's mainly. This transportation plan. Uh I've already drafted the urban development area, which is also new text, um and I've sent that around. Um and then the uh, let's see, the capital improvement program, that's already new, that's already kind of been drafted. Uh so the recap of the community engagement events and the transport plan are really the only two new pieces.
Okay, okay, cause I was imagining there'd be something like this in there and. You'd be elaborating in in some format like that.
So that's, yeah, so that's that basically replacing uh the existing, uh it's called strategies and goals.
Okay.
So it's not technically new, but it's gonna be principles and goals, yeah. So, yeah, so it's not really a new part document, I didn't think about it at that one, but it's it's just kind of reframing what the conflict said. Previously, but in a different lens against the content.
Right, okay.
So then that that's the place where these examples are really important to to make it stronger, so um. This is a really good feedback, this helps a lot, so I'll. Focus less on the event itself, but more of the important things on how it fits in the weaving approach, that'd be very good.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome, so uh if you want to go in, what I I did about a week ago, Javier and I were in Iraq one day. I went through all my previous notes from uh the older discussions. I went through all my previous notes from uh the older discussions, uh things that Matt told me versus to be sugar and glue. Those are all uh either considered or then on this word doc that we we gave him, it's called uh. Uh yes. So that's in our working folder, if you guys would like me to resend the working folder, so you can follow the the parking lot document.
Yeah, this is really um, it's really cool, looks like stuff we put there, and I wanna go in the parking lot.
And then um I think what I'm doing now is using track changes, so whenever something's kind of addressed or something, I just cross it off. Delete it, but it's on track changes then, so then we can see that we didn't erase anyone else's ideas, so we considered them. Okay, so um.
Do you need, do you need eyes on anything that you've done so far to like help with editing and?
I think the the most important thing, if anyone has any comments on this urban development area text that I sent around, I sent it around. Around New Years.
Oh boy, I remember that, I'm sorry.
And then also the uh.
Oh.
And then the transportation plan that I sent out, send out uh any suggestions on. Intersections or other things that uh are of concern, I think that that's where comments would be the most appreciative.
Intersections?
Anything having to do with the road infrastructure, I mean, um the the plan is, uh in my opinion, we focus on. The intersections and the potential growth of the town and how those would be impacted. Also mentioned, you know. In this transportation bubble, we're also looking at pedestrians, uh we're gonna mention that um. In terms of parking, uh from what I've been hearing, the amount of parking is not a concern, it's it's. Telling people where the parking is, visitors where the parking is, so. I think in our transportation plan, it will be more focusing on signage. Directing people to, hey, by the way, there's more parking next to to uh Victory Hall if you're at Bains, you know what I mean? So that would be a recommendation of my opinion um that, you know. All transfer plans typically talk about parking, so I'm just saying that. It doesn't seem like, well, there's not a quantity of parking problem, it's more about where people knowing where it is. And then we have uh Jack's, Jack's map that we can improve. And again, this is just explained to Vida and also uh readers of the company who consider these things. For the future. So yeah, uh feedback on the urban development areas, uh text that I sent on New Years um. And then feedback on the future transport plan. And if you still have any feedback on the capital improvement program uh. Not only the Excel chart that I sent out, but I also sent it on about one and a half pager on that to explaining the intention. Uh that was around New Years too, Javier and I were hanging out in Eric's New Years. So that's all fresh text that I I drafted from scratch, but it really talks about. You know, the intention of why cap- uh capital improvement plan is needed uh by code. And uh how the town is approaching it and how it can be integrated into the legislative process. So that's a great to get feedback on that. Uh and then I I I did send uh like some box text around for Victory Hall to uh Lisa and uh. And Nancy and uh Stevie.
Okay.
If you have any thoughts on that, I mean, basically what Javier and I have been doing, we've been reading the existing contract, if anything's like a red flag, is that still happening? Or is that still relevant? For for instance, the the text says that there's a uh a fundraising committee for Victory Hall. So I don't know if there's still a fundraising committee, it doesn't seem, I haven't heard of it, so we can just. You know, if someone takes a look at it, we need to believe that, but there is no fundraising.
Or we could get a fundraising committee going, that's the other option. Yep.
Okay.
Leave that right grants.
That's right.
So um. And again, just to to mention at every section of the contract, what I've done, when there's ever some recommendations that are kind of varying in the text. I pull those out and put them at the bottom of the page, and a very clear section says recommendations, but. So when every, when someone's reading the contract, they don't have to hunt, say what this really is saying or trying to infer. They can just look at it at this, the end and look at the bullet points that I just say, the recommendation is to um. For instance, for. Update the master plan, yeah. Okay. So that's, that's all that I have right now.
Give the man a raise, yeah, seriously. Thank you, Melody a raise, Javier a raise.
We still have a little bit more road to go on this. But I think uh Lisa, what you're doing is tremendous, since that's on the whole level of later detail. Without that piece of the puzzle, I will probably recommend deleting that page. But since you have it and you're working on it, and it is tremendously good. Awesome. Thank you, really.
Lisa, with your new town. I'm sorry, mayor.
Um Laura, do you wanna bend the gavel?
Yeah.
Not to, not to um. Come off as. Brute or anything, but I forwarded Lincoln's email from January on the um urban. Um planning.
I have some amendments on that.
Okay.
Awesome.
I just forgot to send them, I'm sorry.
Be fresh in your mind, because. I I know with this email server, if it's not like on the top of my inbox, it's just gone, I don't know how better than that.
I get it forwarded to my Gmail.
It's, I do that too, if I have something important, I just have to remember to actually hit the forward button.
So another another important section of the contract I'm insisting is talking about the requirements of the condo of Virginia for contracts. So what what I did is I went through the actual website of the code document. And I I literally said, I said, is this a requirement applicable to us, and if it is. How we doing it, so. So some of the content text uh is is probably referring to previous code versions, so that 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 I updated. Can't think of the new. So there's some terminology that changed over time. Uh and just like the major things, uh capital improvement program, we never had one before, transportation plan, we never had one explicitly. Um so that checks that box also, uh we will hopefully check that box.
The one thing that comes to my mind, since you're talking about that is affordable housing and manufactured homes. Because there was something specific that you knew that I think we need to take action on.
So that's a a recommendation.
Okay.
I'm drafting it as a recommendation um to sort out that terminology, it's kind of like uh the Mr. Quick case, if we could. Call it that, the the terminology uh. I I went back to the town council's email, it's called, what's the R, the fancy R, manufactured? Was it Fleetwood or?
It was a. It's in the email, but man, we we used the definition.
Maybe found this uh terminology online and it actually covers this manufacturing RVs that are kind of like homes. So anyway, that that was referred to in Mr. Quick's uh application deliberations, but. The contract recommends that 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 terminology be sorted out, because in the current zoning in the town uh. Mobile homes uh are are not uh allowed in certain areas, double Y, so it's like. But at the same time, the code of Virginia requires a town to advocate for manufactured homes. So you've got mobile home terminology and manufactured is is re- isn't, but. Um advocated for, and then you've got the RV stuff floating around, so that's why I recommend, and again, we're not. Creating specific uh ordinance or policy based on the contract, we're just pointing you the direction, so. After the content is approved in its final form, whatever that is, then the planning commission can go back and say, okay, we're supposed to do this. We're supposed to do this, we're supposed to do this. And and this, and then you you look at those, and we can see it as action items to consider.
Well, and I mean, we could, we could. Kind of do both, like next time we have a hearing, we could address any other zoning text that we need to address. Like Hilton, Birds, McMonstone, so make a note, next time we have a hearing coming up, make sure we notice for. Whatever other zoning texts, so for example, allowing manufactured homes.
And then start going. Run down our action items.
Because we couldn't wanna just. We could just do it just because, but we also just know that we have a list of things that we have to accomplish and wait. And bundle them together.
But I think that's fair recognition, because I I I heard how expensive the donations are.
Exactly, exactly.
It's like the same recommendation to try to do joint meetings.
Yeah.
What I got um. Just because you say on appetizing.
Yeah.
So you could do the same thing. Doing that too, still, well, thank you, Lincoln.
Lincoln, did we put um, I don't know if I sent you the internet comment? For the um, the capital improvement plan, does it have anything about improving um internet infrastructure?
We.
What's that?
We we uh to my memory, you don't have a specific dollar amount, Javier is a consultant, Alamo County. Uh broadband manager.
Yeah.
And it seems like it's more uh, yeah, let's see, I think it's policy uh changes enabling private section to come in. So for instance, uh they have several trenches of grants that the county has applied for and they've gone. We can't remember the terminology, but it's like one, two, three, four, so then that's. Why they think that another company's gonna come in here and, you know, basically appeal to one of the other companies that is existing to really boost the service.
Okay, so it's not something we would necessarily need to put in our.
I mean, we're we're required to to consider broadband.
Right.
But it's it's it's. The much, it's not something we put money towards, it's more of a county responsibility.
Okay.
And then like. I'm having trouble right now thinking of a specific town capital improvement project.
Right.
Rather than something regional or county.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, maybe cellphone coverage would be a little bit different, like if the town was having significant cellphone coverage, they would allocate. For uh another tower somewhere. And loosen certain requirements for that. But broadband coverage is a little bit different.
Okay.
Yeah. And since we understand that, you know, the county, they have several staff members focusing on this um, and there's a lot of federal grant money. People can also, you know, if their incomes are lower than a certain amount, they can go out and get a reduced rate for for broadband.
And right now, it's not gonna be encouraging, but also we're moving past just the basic accessibility. Towards those additional barriers, so now they're seeing that that kind of. It's changing a little bit, we we're gonna expect more broadband now, we need to make sure people uh have the devices. Or the technical knowledge, so that's, despite us not seeing all the fruits of that. That is the correction that's, it's now going, which I think is positive.
Right.
You you're addressing other elements of the digital divide, not that first one where people were just in front of the library.
Okay.
And the Boys and Girls Club, there's a few students that did mention, for instance, the NSB, because they're probably really interested in gaming and things like that. So I think it's about, certainly we have to address that in the conflict, but um I haven't thought of any way we can put a dollar sign to it.
Right, okay. Okay. Thank you.
So chipping away at these actionized things, I'm actually holding.
Javier, is the kitchen still obsolete here?
Um we uh. We have a fridge.
I just wondered if we ever needed like a community kitchen, it still doesn't work back there.
Uh hookups, but we sold the flat.
We're like a food bank or a temporary. Well, I remember when I was on council, we had this huge emergency, I forget, it was flood or heat wave, I don't know, I remember passing out water downstairs. But there's always seems to be some kind of community crisis where we need supply, not always. Once or twice every few years, but. I don't know, something to consider with capital improvement, people in need having a place to get basic needs.
But I think the generator uh raised by Ms. Morse was was a lot of that.
Yeah.
Uh there was also a suggestion about uh the. Is it AI, AIDs or? Excellent suggestion also to add in the grant writer in our town program, so the town council had no objection to that. Um and I I frankly, this, you know, grant writer, it could be a cost, but it can bring in much more money than the cost, yeah.
I think you should do that next, that's that's gonna be your next.
Well, Laura and Lucy and I are working on something for the museum.
Nice.
Just about my time.
Well, Amy and Marson, I both signed up for classes that teach you how to write grants.
Thanks.
Yes.
So we get certified.
Yeah. Awesome.
Local hero.
You pass me that resource, please.
Yeah. I mean, that's how this town is going to thrive again, in my opinion, but.
If I can quit my family getting sick long enough to.
Yeah, right.
You hate to do something. Or the dog knocking my head out.
Hey, he probably deserved it.
Oh my gosh.
Jeez. All right, can we um?
Yeah, I motion we quit this. Right now.
Quit your second.
All right, motion passes, media terms, nine to twenty one.
She wasn't joking, she's writing my checks.
I've had this on my to-do list for a while, at least, what is it?